We're gonna call the council meeting that we were supposed to have had on December 20th. The order, this is January the 3rd, 2022.
Is this the workshop?
None of them, this is the meeting. Jenny, you get in and trash it please.
Your honorable citizens, pray to me with each and every one of these council members, dear Lord, that you do business as seen. Praise for everything that's been done in your honor. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pray that you, Jesus, to the Father, and to the United States of America, into the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, united as one, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda for the December 20th of 2021?
Do you want that? I make one for him.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Mayor's report. I heard good things about the Christmas parade. Everybody seemed to enjoy it. I don't know what your guy's opinion is of the not telephoned ever, but I haven't heard any complaints about it.
They don't like it. Everybody seemed to enjoy it, they're talking to me.
The Christmas bizarre. The vendors did not show up. Even some of them that had already paid, my understanding, we had one or two, he, I believe. Santa Claus was a dickhead. Kids enjoyed that, I'd like to thank Ms. Quinn for coming to help and Mr. Paul Golding. I appreciate all your help and credit needed and appreciated. And big thank you to Santa Claus. The ARPA funds. Tracy let me know that we have to make a decision on those. That has to be submitted by April, before April?
April 30th.
April 30th, so I guess we need to implement that into our workshop. Between now and then, so we can check and make where that money's gonna go, because we have to let them know before we get the rest of it. My understanding. And that's all I have on the mayor's report and definitely on President's report at the moment. Attorney's report?
I don't have anything.
Attorney's report?
I provided everyone with, um, with pay, really. Wood Construction Specialties quote to replace the doors at the community center. He actually turned in, I believe, four different quotes. And they're four, four parts. One for the door, or one for each door and one for each of the hardware to replace the doors. But that's all we have so far. Also, the December shut offs, we did not shut anyone's water off in December. And as of this afternoon, we have eight accounts that still have not been paid. So if you wanna review that, I got that here. Also, we have one customer that is having some financial trouble. I think it would probably be in his best interest if we could, we have another customer that we don't turn their water off whenever they're late. If we could do the same for him, I think that would benefit him greatly.
How is it in the President's?
I don't know. It's already been set with the other customer.
You said there's financial issues?
How long is this going to last?
I don't know. This person did have someone living with him that was helping with the bills and they're no longer there. And he has health issues.
You said there's another customer that if he doesn't pay his bill, we don't cut it off?
That is correct. It's been like that since I started.
Are the bills being paid?
Yes ma'am, they are. They pay every month, but it's just not by the 20th.
So is the other person gonna pay every month? We just not, you just not detecting their late fee, is that what you're saying?
We give the late fee, we just don't cut the water off if it's not paid by this one again.
And on the water not being cut off. We discussed a meeting before where that wasn't done during the holidays. When it came up this time. Tracy reached out to the attorney and her advice was to not do it and then let council know that it wasn't done this time. And that's what she was saying, is that, and she spoke to me about it, that's why they were not cut off this Christmas. So it's gonna be up to us to decide and set what kind of timeframe we're gonna give those people. She said there's only eight now?
Yes ma'am.
Initially, there were, I believe, thirty, but everybody else paid.
There were quite a few. I know three of those are actually one account.
So we're gonna have to come up with something like we did before. Setting a date. Giving them time to pay it and then having it paid by some date to finish everybody off. So with that being said, as far as this other customer, I don't know who it is, I don't know if it's a firm one yet. But I guess we should implement something like that in that timeframe so there's not, kind of. Also, while we're talking about, I don't know if he's gonna bring this up in the workshop or not. But, um. The one, I just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. The one that, um. We have a customer who apparently, at some point, Tracy can explain it better, hasn't been paying their bill for several years.
It's in here. Yeah. It's in the workshop.
Okay, well, while we're on the subject, we might as well do that, there won't be discussing the workshop. But there has been a customer found that has not been making a payment for about five years. At some point, their deposit was even returned to them. I got notice of this the other day and the only thing that we could do, at that point, I told Tracy to charge the deposit. The $23,000 in use that had been used in that time period was to charge that. Because when she found it out, she didn't work water and had the water cut off. The issue is the amount that's billed every month, the normal amount. That's gotta be figured and that was gonna take some time. So what I told her to do was charge the deposit and $23,000 if he pays that, send the water back home. Until council can decide what they willing to do and we can figure out what he's actually gonna be charged.
What I figured is he's usually here around a half a year at a time. So based on that, and just charging for the half a year, for five and a half years, would be $1,380 in force. If I billed him for all twelve months at the monthly base rate, would be $2,852 additional that he went out.
And the problem here is, very good, I'll make it a customer here. The problem is. If he got his deposit back at some point in the past, which is the explanation that was given to me was that's how they didn't wind up in the new system. And nobody knew.
Was he getting his water on and off?
He knew, yeah, somebody that's out of town, that's not here all the time. He obviously made it through the print.
All that we found it was when we printed everything off, every meter we had. To, we was going through to see the ones that didn't have locks on them, so we could make a list to change them out. That's how we found it.
That and waste management called us, but hey, this guy has a can.
Yeah.
We don't have an account for this address.
If we hadn't done the go-through, we would have never found him.
Well, hey, waste management been kicking up the garbage all the time. But he didn't have anything on the keyway over there.
Exactly.
And are we sure, is this a water sewer garbage customer?
Yes ma'am.
The meter was never put in the new system because it was closed on the old system.
In 2016, and 2019 is whenever the refund was done.
Never knew it existed.
Whenever we print the water meter, the re, within the re, it would not print off because it was on vacation status. So we would have never known about it.
He knew about it.
But he knew about it.
So my next question to council is, does he pay the total amount that wants to keep his water on? Or do we give him three months to break the bail or something?
And are we gonna charge for just the half a year or the full half?
Well, if he's not here, he's not here for a month, right?
He's not.
I say just charge him for one.
Whatever he gives for half a year.
But now, do we want him to pay all of that now? Or do we want to do it sometime?
If he agrees to pay it all, then fine, but if he doesn't, then we can work with him with some payment that he has to pay.
But we need to set a time on the.
Yes. And he's trying to sell the property.
Hmm.
Okay, well, then it needs to be paid within three months, or if he's trying to sell it, it needs to be paid before.
We don't even know.
He wants me to research putting a lien on the property.
That's what you're saying, because then he can't sell it.
So this is the problem with him, with this guy too. The day I went out there and found it, it was uncovered. When I went back the next day, he seen me. I went back the next day to walk on it. It was covered up with leaves, trying to hide it.
Tell me, obviously, he got a deposit back at some point, Tracy, we can reset when that was?
Yes ma'am. It was refunded in September, he actually cashed it, just cashed it in November of 2019.
So it's not like he didn't know. That's what I'm saying, I think three months. Plenty. That's how we're gonna pay the rest of it and keep his bill up today. So we have.
Actually, we had a customer request that we put in a drive-through service. Like a drive-through window, like some of the other cities do. I don't know where we put it, how we made it. But that's a request from a citizen.
What happened to the drop off? What happened to that? I have two guys back in the summer though. Yes, it's still not here, wow.
We're working on it.
We're working on it ever since this summer? Come on.
But he still wants to drive through so he can get a receipt.
Well, we don't have to have a drive-through if we have a drop off.
Well, he wants a receipt. He can't get out of his car.
I am saying, you don't have to get out of your car with the drop off, I live outside.
Then he won't get a receipt.
I live outside.
Well, we went up there and dropped Rachel, one customer that wanted a receipt. No, I'm pleased with the receipt.
I understand, sure.
But we didn't need to get, on the drop off, what is the issue with that?
You were working on that.
Keep it small and fine.
You're top of the case, Michelle, you need to keep quiet until 10:00 p.m., okay? Come on.
I'm just.
She just asked me to add. You need to go side me.
She was working on it.
So you're saying that Michelle's been working on it?
The only ones that we've been able to find are over $500, we're trying to find them.
Then we can hold.
We're looking.
That's not a problem.
Well, just go ahead and file one, give us a pass. Does it, I mean, we have discussed this, it's been done way back.
Way back, please.
I provided everyone with a proposal from Lee Stevenson as well. That's for payroll, monthly adjustments and reconciliations, and initial reconciliation of the ledger. Oh, I'm sorry, and credit card reconciliation as well.
Is the minimum that he would do on this day of payroll thing is ten? Because it's probably, we have to have a minimum, ten employees on the payroll would be processed by weekend.
That's based on what we have right now.
We have that right now?
Or what we had at the time we were discussing that.
Right now, we actually don't have anything back to consider that.
As far as payroll?
Well, what he was doing, because he's not working there.
Now, this is a separate thing that he come to us to talk, this about.
Yeah.
Well, he said, he's already gone, he come back.
This has anything to do with all of this, this is just offering services and stuff, then we can explain how, right now, we have the city park in every part of there's no oversight.
So one of the issues that Vernon and other small cities get dinged on their audit is that when you only have one or two employees in your office, you don't have really the opportunity for oversight and kind of checks and balances. And Lee was previously, you know, a municipal auditor, and so he's really knowledgeable in kind of the holes in management of the city. So those are the services that he's offering, the things that, you know, you'll get a little. In audit, it's always.
Yeah, it's always been in the audit. But this will help with that and will help in a lot of ways, but. And we also talked about this sort of thing in changing up some of the policies, the procedures that we have. As far as which one we want to go. Setting up something, someone over. Over the supervisor, I mean, we've not, we discussed it, but we've not. It was December, we're gonna work on like the workshop. This isn't, I mean, this isn't anything that we have to write on the notice, not even on the agenda, but it's in here. We really need to review it and discuss it along with the other policies and things we need to set in place.
And you know, we are having that special workshop tomorrow night for that. First workshop? Also, Ms. Ina Wood has overpaid her account through PSN. I wanna say she makes a hundred dollar payment every month, I believe. Her bill is not that much. But we're looking at $762.41 credit right now, and she has requested $600 of that back. I told her I'd have to bring it here because with us not requesting her to pay that money, I don't know if we could give that to her or not.
So this is something she's just been paying on her own head.
Yes.
What did you left and why did you tell us?
She didn't realize that they were gonna take it out every month when she started doing it with the SNS, I think.
Well, he had.
Even some.
She had a bank, them taking out a bank account?
Yes ma'am. But she authorized it. I told her that the first step for her to do would be to call PSN and see if she could change that pump there in, because there's nothing we could do to help her with that.
Michelle, what do you think? I mean, it's an overpayment.
I didn't, it would be up to you all.
They just give her $600, give it all to her at one. Because if you, if you, I mean, we're not a bank, we're not stacking her money.
I wouldn't be comfortable. So I would refund whatever her overpayment is, as long as she's got her deposit.
That's what I was saying, just if we're gonna do it, just give it back to her and then she needs stress to her that she needs to take back. Well, I'm thinking that we don't have anything on December 6th, do we?
December 6th?
Yeah. January, I'm sorry, January, I'm looking at this December agenda.
No ma'am, not, nothing on the work.
Okay, because I was thinking that the meeting that we were having tomorrow was on the 6th.
We had talked about that, but I've got Chipley's workshop.
That's us, okay, thank you. Fire chief's report?
That's you, sir. You go first and then I'll finish it up. How about that?
I'm not sure if we're reporting.
He didn't tell you anything inside?
He told me that you want to get there.
Okay. I have a list from Shaq. The lights are out at the station, in the station. So we need to order some new lights. His hot water heater is broken, busted. The air packs are going out this year. He needs lawn equipment. The fire truck pumps need to be serviced. Engine 240 will change, boilers change, and there's a list of issues for the service tech, which I think that's what you were gonna discuss.
On the fire engine, everything will change except for the coolant filter. The guy has to come with a special tool, the prop filters are off. We couldn't get it off, he tried and I tried. And then for the tanker, O'Reilly's didn't have none of the filters and stuff. So he was missing three filters, so he'd be scheduled to come back. And then he just changed a couple of lights that was missing on the fire trucks.
So he's saying that he's asking for obviously more than his amount that he can spend on, so we're gonna need a price list.
Yes ma'am, he's gonna work on that, but he also needs four back tires for the engine.
I heard you were a truck.
Ma'am, true. The engine, fire truck, it's happening.
Well, I'm not gonna tell him to bring a price list on the fire truck tires, because we have to have the fire truck. I mean, I don't know about the rest of y'all, but I would assume that he would get the best price on that that he could get and also get what he needs for the truck. And the old truck. And get us a list of everything else.
He said he would have it for the next week.
And if you're close, it'd be good, I have some less than $500. Maybe just do it.
Some of them, we know, you've just.
The stuff that's over his amount?
Yeah.
You get to ask the rest of them to do it.
Yeah, I usually do that. He's just like, hey, I'm gonna get it, that's fine, get it.
Yeah.
Get it.
All right, right for four.
Timothy is requesting $865.59 for cheer, for hones, shoes, bows, and shirts. They have raised the money for it. But they have, they can't pay for it separately, they have, actually, they have a gift card that they were gonna pay for part of it and they pay the rest with the rec fund. But they can only accept one form of payment. So can we add that to the agenda, please?
Yeah.
You say they have some of the money?
Yes ma'am, $500.
But he's asking for $865.
Total, no, total, total is $865.
So he's asking for $365, who can I see it? Correct?
He's asking for the whole $865, because like I said, that $500 is on a gift card.
So what's gonna go on, that he just gonna put the $500 back in the red?
Yes ma'am.
All right, well, that is number four.
Thank you.
That's for uniforms?
Yes ma'am, for cheer.
Okay. Public work for four.
Well, I got, I'll talk about workshop.
Okay. Public participation? There's no business, new business. Number one, a motion to approve the Dollar General variance request for parking setback and vegetative bumper requirements per Washington County planning commission staff report. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Number two, a motion to approve the Family Dollar slash Tree variance request to waive parking setback and vegetative bumper requirements for Washington County planning commission's recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve? Second? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve that Red Fox Enterprises CDBG administrative proposal. Second? Discussion? Has everybody reviewed that? Anybody have any issues? Michelle, have you reviewed it?
I, it, I don't have any concerns.
All in favor?
No.
Opposed? Your motion carried. Number four, I need a motion to approve $865.59 for the rec department to pay for cheer uniforms. Do I have a motion to approve? Second? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? None, motion carried. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? Discussion? All in favor? Meeting adjourned. I'm gonna open the workshop for the city of Vernon, January 3rd of 2022. Number one, animal control training update.
So we have animal control offered at Gulf Coast, it's going to be January 31st through February 3rd, 8 to 7. $595. Right now, that's the only class they're offering at Gulf Coast.
Who needs the date?
January the 31st through February the 3rd. It's Tuesday for Friday.
And it's five minutes past two?
Yes ma'am.
Jason, are you still up for that?
Yep.
You good with it?
All right, I'll get it set up.
Number two, city hall closed, January 17th for Martin Luther King Day. Meeting through SCAB for January 18th of 2022. Number three, floodplain management.
The state wants the city to adopt a new resolution. And I need some training on floodplain management.
You need some training on what?
What, plain management?
I thought the county does a lot of it.
No ma'am. I did not like anything, I mean, everything passed off, but it was city park. But if we can find something, that'd be great.
Well, I'm gonna play. So, Michelle, you're thinking that that's county and not city park?
So the city is still, the city has its own responsibilities as a floodplain manager, but I thought we had contracted with the county for them to handle that. Kind of the way you do planning, because it's a floodplain management is a component of the planning.
Well, this has been, it's been active for the last two years.
The county, it's been so long since we have anything with this.
So what I'm saying is, I think you'll have to adopt a resolution that identifies your city clerk as the floodplain manager, because they want you to designate someone. And as to where that we have an agreement with the county for them to actually carry out the duties of the flood. And ask for that we have an agreement with the county for them to actually carry out the duties of the floodplain manager. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, because otherwise we're gonna have to pay for it. Training for Clark, who has already got, um, a lot that needs to be done.
Oh, we're still thinking anyway.
That's what I'm thinking.
I guess that we have the ordinance that states that the city clerk is the floodplain manager, but I'm
I'm definitely not, I'm not confused. In 2017, when Jeff Carter was the county attorney for Washington County, we, um, exchanged an interlocal agreement draft, for floodplain management with the county. Um, and then he left as county attorney, I think shortly thereafter. And sent it to Jay Hawkins.
Jessica.
Jessica Hawkins at, um, Washington County, March of 2018.
Okay, so we just need to verify that that's still in place with them, and then see if we still need to do the, you know, and it's named in the part.
Right, so you, you still have to, you have to update your floodplain guidelines every time the fed do an update, they expect you, and it's, it's a, it's a form, they don't let you make any changes to it, we literally just fill in the blanks.
I think that's what this resolution is supposed to be.
So. I don't see it's that much of a word copy. I don't see a sign copy of it, but we definitely have discussed it, so I will follow up on that tomorrow with the county's rights.
Okay, thank you. Number four, franchise fees.
Um, the council had discussed raising franchise fees back in September. Um, Michelle and I have worked on that. Um, we are at six percent, and that's as high as we can get. Sorry about that.
Alright, number five.
That's one we've already discussed.
Yeah. Jason, you say you have something?
Yeah, I got a couple things. Alright, well, one and two, um, we have three wells. Well, one and two has been down. That's part of that grant that we were just gonna get upgraded. Um, so we took them offline. DEP knows that we took them offline. But we have got to, um, basically get them cleaned, the wells themselves. We're just gonna do that at the house, right?
Which ones are on there?
That's the ones at the old fire department. We, um, we were running on manually, basically every day turn on man, we keep on running, but it's still not enough. So, we're down to one well. So if that well goes down, we're, we're dead to work.
Where are we on that grant?
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything from Red Fox, but they were saying it could be next year before we start even looking at anything.
Will you check with them and say?
Understand that, that if well three goes out, you're out of gas. I mean, you can't run down there and turn these on. Not now. I mean, I, I went through DEP, took, officially took them offline, but they sit there for extended period of time, and we have to turn them on and sample once a month. And then the last couple of months, I think in October, Jason turned them on, let them run for quite a while. And noticing just a little water and all from the, the rust and the sediment. We're noticing that when I sampled it, the last time I sampled, we're not, and no guarantee. I didn't do it in December. I was gonna come to you, me and Jason were gonna come to you, when y'all cancel that meeting like last month. And tell y'all, you know, where we stood, but, you know, if it's gonna be an extended period of time, I, I personally think you need to go on and just try to clean them up, flush them, put them back online.
And who's gonna be doing that? Is that the y'all gonna do?
Laura will work.
Yeah.
They, they will come and assist Jason then.
Yeah.
The only problem is, most wells that are developed and put in with a flush line, a line that's sticking out here, you can just blow it off. These two wells down here don't have it. So there's no way to flush that line out, flush it out for a while, and kind of let it get clear and all that. Everything, when it comes home and goes off, goes into the system. They were not built with flush lines. So.
Is this an expense that we can afford?
It's not, it's not an expense to speak of. I mean, you, basically, I'm hoping you can just disassemble wells, use your chlorine, blow it out.
We just got to take my collar, basically.
Yeah, take a couple elbows off and break it in the system, where you can blow it out, and once they're done doing that, I'll come in and sample it for two days. Two little samples. They don't cost much. If they're clear, you can put it back online. But the reason them are offline, and this happened long before Jason got here, is the control system tells me to come on and go off, something happened to them. It's back, turned. And they never got fixed. I think it'll be a simple fix if we can get ahold of the guy that put that system in. I never knew him, but I think I knew, I think Rick Roller, that used to do some work here, suggested him, and he come in and put the system in. So if you can get with him, because I think Jason's gonna check the phone lines, that phone line check.
See, when, when it went down and we were going manual, I got, I got a guy to come in here and then he said it was the phone line supposedly, which I thought, well, maybe, maybe it was, maybe it was something, you never know, and it's gone.
So let's see what we got, if we got that, yeah, well, I mean, because that's a
I believe DEP will, would hurt them if you don't have a backup work.
Yeah, well, and we should anyway, it shouldn't be a threat to DEP. It's not that we need to have done anyway.
I talked to rural water, I didn't, don't come down here, I just said, hey, can y'all help them? Yeah. Now, there may be, there may be some issues once they get ready and, you know, something stops, and they have to bring it back to you or something like that, but it should be a simple process. You know, but I don't know how bad it is. You gotta understand as well, it's an emergency.
Well, that's important. We don't need them now, we need them up. So whatever we need to do, let's find out what that is.
Well, I, I, I'm telling you, if you can, if you can give him approval, I can make a phone call tomorrow and get the ball rolling. Get him down here. We have going.
Let's get it done.
I can sample D now.
I'm, I'm okay with that, though, y'all. That's not something.
If you, if you clean it and put it online, and you don't fix the controls, we'll be doing something.
Yeah, let's fix the controls as well.
I can give you a number, Luke Coleman, and he should be able to tell you who it was.
We can just agree on that, correct, Michelle? We don't have to go down?
You don't, you can if you want to. But we're in a work zone right now.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
We need to get this done.
Let's just do it. Are we all in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, second thing, the, uh, the auger system. At the end, when the, when the, when the sewage comes in the plant, the auger system, we've been talking about, this causes problems at the plant, it is done. Um, I had, um, what's her name's company?
Mayu.
Huber. They're, they're the ones that, they get installed, and they come down, and the guy, I guess when it was put in, it's basically been band-aided for so long that it's, it's not band-aided. Which it's been offline for a while, I've been doing it manually with, you know, cleaning the screen manually for a while. Well, this, uh, he was supposed to give me a price to replace it, um, with what he could use there, which was only the casing, basically. But the price he was telling me was, it's gonna be, it's gonna be up there. I was hoping he'd have me a price by tonight, but he hasn't yet, so that's why I just said do it in the workshop. Just to give y'all a heads up, I mean, this is something we got to have too. It's, uh, because it keeps all the trash and everything out of the plant.
Well, maybe you can find out something tomorrow before I work, though.
Yeah.
You're, you're looking up at it too, though.
He, uh, the guy, he'd come, oh, I mean, I'm surprised he came from, from Huber. Alright, third. Third, last thing, I had one person apply for the job, and he said not that. I didn't know he was covering the, not the fire department, but
That's wrong.
Alright. Yeah, that was the one we had open, nobody's applied for it. So I figured I'll let y'all know all that.
So you hired him in your bravery?
I was gonna let y'all know. And then, well, he, he applied today.
Yeah.
Generally, you hire a temporary and then
Well, the job, it closed.
Closed on December 15th.
December 15th, so that's why I wanted to let y'all know. I wanted to let y'all know. I mean, if not, you can start whenever you want.
He's the one that weed-eated this whole fire department.
Thank you.
No, no problem.
He weed-eated this to the bone. He didn't have a board, so he weed-eated it open. He's keeping pretty good work.
That's all I got.
Well, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, he
I just knew that it was advertised and the job closed. You know, for, you know, I didn't want to step over my boundaries there. I know I can hire a temporary, but I knew that job was advertised and everything, and I knew the time would run out, and so
Anybody else have anything?
I got, uh, over by Mr. Run the Deversen's house, the, that, uh, Holden Pond over there. Jason, she got drained right in front of her house. Uh, there's a hole there that's about six foot deep. That, uh, needs to, that needs to be stopped or something.
Her side or this side?
This side, this side. Over right there by the pond. My wife, I let her step in the other day, not knowing what to go in on, and I said, and I, there was nobody at the city hall, so I didn't call nobody, and I figured I'd talk about it, and I did.
How's this draining over here at the, where they, they can check on it there?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
The only other thing, I'm sorry, I have is that, um, I received an email today from Connie Welch, um, with Washington County, um, about some FEMA training, and I don't know who needs to attend that. I think the last time anyone attended was pulled off.
Can you contact her, just so we can find out, so we know if that's gonna fall on our public worker, public works director, or who needs that? Alright, does anybody else have anything?
One, one last thing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Hey, last night, we had power outage with a storm. Sheriff's Department called me. And I, and I, I don't know who this falls on. They called me about the caution line, which they do every time. I was under the impression that there's a plug-in down there that DOT was supposed to give us a generator just for that caution line in that situation. I don't know if that, I meant to ask her today, and I just got thinking about it.
There should be a maintenance and operations agreement.
Yeah.
That, somewhere.
I know there was something way back, but I didn't They got a hookup for a generator there for a small one, but I, I was under the impression that they were gonna provide one just for that, or that we, that we need to get one for that.
We need to find out if they're expensive or not.
I didn't, I didn't know on that. And they sent a deputy last night, so I'm gonna help me out, but
I don't think that's gonna fall on
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
I was gonna say, every time the caution line's out, I call the sheriff's department, let them know.
Yeah, they, I mean, when that, when they called me last night.
It's a state highway.
Yeah, when they called me last night, they said they have to roll away.
Well, that's the thing, there, there should be a, we should have an agreement with DOT for, um, maintenance and operations of their, because it's their highway. It may, the agreement may be older than the issue that we're dealing with.
Yeah, because it wasn't there before.
Correct. So we just need to reach out to DOT, and I don't, I, I know contact there, um, but it's not gonna be the person that will be over the agreement, but I'll, I'll see what I can find.
Go ahead. I, um, I talked to Mr. Hattie, kept up the circle age, and, uh, we really need to try to get up with him and get him at a meeting so that he can actually tell us what was discussed between him and, him and Chris Brown. Because we need to get that situated, because if we don't, it's gonna turn into a mess.
Well, and I, I and other members of council have stated the same thing. Every time it's been brought up that he, him and Representative Repeals needs to be at a meeting, so they will know what's going on, instead of us just sitting here and
And that's what I told him.
Yes, and I was what a council member said, because, I mean, I don't, I don't personally know what, what's been discussed between them.
Right.
I don't know what they know and what they don't know.
That's what I, that's what I told him, I said, look, we can, we need to maybe encourage him just a little bit. He wants to send a lawyer to his behalf, instead of, instead of him coming. I don't know if he, he should be able to do that, I'll see if I can do it. But I don't know why he wouldn't take care of it, because I'm saying, you know, because we're all for him.
Y'all want me to reach out to both of them and see if they can come to the February 7th workshop?
Is Joey probably gonna be here?
I have no idea. He was supposed to be here tonight, he had an emergency.
Because as far as I know, he's the one that's had any speaking weight either of them, i- if, if there's been any call.
And have we found out anything anymore about the fences going around the old fire station and stuff like that yet? Are, are we in that process of getting that done?
As far as I know, Joey was handling all of that. So I have no idea where we are.
Joey's just one member of this council.
I understand, um, he was the one that was just helping getting
So, what I'm saying, it was presented, approved, now you, you, or Michelle, got to get it, need to get together and take care of getting quotes, making sure that it's done.
Yeah, exactly. Joey was said he would take care of all of that.
Well, I would say, Matt, wait, and ask him when he's here, but do we know what's going on? I know that the signs went up at the firehouse.
He's down, yeah.
I know, but I thought that Joey was arranging for there to be, the family to be there when that was put up, or something?
Not quite.
Do we, we don't know anything about that?
We don't.
I know that it's, uh, I've driven by the car.
It's been a, it's been a while. Yeah.
The Boswell family?
Yeah, Boswell signs up.
Yes.
It doesn't only, it's just a sign that's honoring him. He's gonna be in the first bike, I guess, uh, one of the
James Boswell box station, which says, but it's not really a caution. You know what I'm saying? It's an honorary, it's an honorary sign.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything?
I could have something. And I want to make this part there. The vegetation in front of the, you know, where the wall and everything here, all that's got is dead now. There's trees growing up in that ditch. And the vegetation is dead, and now it's time to clean it out, because it's all, all the vegetation is dead in there now. And there's trees growing up in that ditch out there. About this time. Time, and so they he knows what I'm talking about, and so now this vegetation is all dead. It's the time to clean it out. So he's gonna do it, it's kind of rich, it'll all just come out, because all the stuff is dead in there now. The trees is growing up in there, dead, so you know what that means, you don't have any leaves or anything on them, and so now it's the time to clean it out, I think. And then at Shady Grove, y'all check those parts every day?
What do you mean?
Do you check the parts?
I check the rest, actually. Well, now I check.
Because that bathroom light at the door, of the women's bathroom was on all Christmas holidays. And I kept forgetting, calling back and saying, on, on, on. Yeah, but if you watch this it's your responsibility as a maintenance person to look out. You need to check that stuff. You need to look at it. I mean, if something hurts, you look and say, well, this is going on or that's going on. You know, just take a look around that pond out there and make sure everything is okay. This is what I'm saying. I'm, I'm not asking you to do his job. But I mean, if you're the maintenance person, I would think that you would take an eye and look out over the whole pond and see what's going on. And that light was on and I kept forgetting, calling back and, and finally I did, the light in the bathroom, because it's every day, every time I got in my car, that light was on in the bathroom and plus that the noise, all the holidays, that noise out there was buzzing at that pond.
They, uh, on saying. I got disconnected now. It's phase on.
It was on, buzz, 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 all night long.
It buzzes and it, it'll be down.
Huh?
It buzzes and it'll be down too.
I know, it was buzzing all night long.
Yes, sir, you have something to say?
Oh, oh, I be at Shady Grove all the time, walking and, um, a couple people that I seen out there uh, be complaining about their bathrooms always locked and the grass is real high.
Yeah, but you gotta keep them off.
Just to reach it out.
Oh, I, I didn't know.
Because if we ditched well.
And the grass is really high. You, you're correct.
The grass is high and that's, that's not, the maintenance.
No, that's the red.
That's a recreation you've sponsored over there. And Jason, when you see a high like that, you need to on nine twelve hertz, you need to get on him to go out there and, and get it done. Because you see it, you know, because I don't really see the grass that much, you know, out there, but I see it, you know, other stuff that goes on. And I have one more thing. Tracy, when I called you about the Christmas lights on this square, what did I teach you?
To let him know to get Christmas lights and put them on the trees.
That's right.
And that's what I did.
There was no lights on the trees.
There were not.
Why?
They were blowups instead.
That's, I mean, I don't even wanna talk about that. I had so many, many people talking about how that moved. And that's not what I actually do. I say, put lights on the trees out there. That's what I say. If you don't have enough lights, buy some. That's what I say. And that was a done. Why? I mean, come on.
That was.
So when this town for asking
That was the message that you like this one?
Call the maintenance people and tell them what we need done. I could tell, and I didn't tell you to do it. I said, tell Jason to do it.
And that's what I did.
Well, why, why didn't they do it? Why didn't, were you told to put lights on the trees?
I didn't know about the trees. I was told about the lots, so that's why.
So where did the water come from here?
And where'd they come from?
We bought them.
Amazon?
Yeah.
What?
We bought them.
Who's we?
That's not what, that's not what I requested. All you had to do was put lights on the trees. It would've been just as nice if you had done, put lights on all the trees like they normally do. But that was not done. And when the town for, I mean, I don't understand it. All I said, and I didn't tell you to do it. I said, tell Jason to get the guys and if you don't have enough lights, then buy some more.
So what, Tracy, what happened? Y'all got together and ordered blowups to get rid of that thing?
Yeah, we done blowups.
Well, I mean, that, that's yard, that was yard decoration we had out there. That's not even commercial. And people were talking about it. And I wasn't pleased with it. Because that's not what I requested.
How much was still, man?
What?
How much was still with blowups?
Four hundred and fifty-six dollars?
How much was budget for that?
A thousand.
Thousand?
But didn't we get about thousand? Didn't we divide that thousand up between the employees?
There was an extra thousand in there.
There was an extra thousand in the Christmas?
So you're saying it was two thousand?
There was two thousand.
And where did that come from? And who approved that? Because I thought we approved a thousand.
It was in the budget.
We approved a thousand.
But you tell us that there was a
You told us that.
A thousand of that was used for the Christmas bonuses.
At the meeting where we divided that up between y'all, you said there was a thousand dollars budget for that?
Oh.
Not two thousand?
That's right.
I will double check on that.
Well, now you done spent another four hundred something dollars if it wasn't, but.
Well, that come out of the street department.
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
We're not gonna bounce stuff around where you gonna pay bigger, take your beer, pay father. We're gonna do it right. And that's the only way we're gonna do it. Because this council is the one that's gonna be responsible for that. And we're gonna hold you responsible for that if it was only a thousand dollars. And we'll go back and look at the budget too, but we have copies of it, I'll say.
Anybody else have anything? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Second, second discussion, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.